I'd like to lay to the side of the United States of America and to the republic for which is changed, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and all.
Unless something came unplugged. Yep, sorry.
Testing, testing. Can you guys hear?
Testing, one, two, testing.
It's on, but.
Okay.
Can you?
Okay.
There's several items on the agenda, and I'll say at the beginning that we have a drainage board meeting that does start at 10:00 a.m. First on the agenda is Natasha, discuss PTO changes.
Good morning. One thing we faced last year, we were very short staffed when I took over in October, and what we ended up looking at was we had a lot of people with PTO that weren't able to utilize it. We had one provider that lost 25 hours last year. It was unpaid to them, as well as it did not roll. I myself lost eight hours that was unpaid or unrolled based on the county policy. Council wanted me to address the commissioners about this and possibly changing some things with it. So I went ahead and I included the handbook rules for PTO, as well as our accrual rates compared to some of the other departments. These were some documentations that were provided, I think it was earlier this year, just for a look at. But I'm mostly here today just to ask if we can look at possibly allowing them to roll more time to next year and/or pay it out if they're unable to use their hours so that they don't lose it.
I'm just going to ask, do we have a limit on the number of hours that can roll over in other departments, or how?
For us, it's 48 hours.
Thirty-five hour schedule. Forty-eight, forty hours scheduled, twenty-four hours. Sheriff's Department, eighty-six hours, fourteen day period, fifty hours.
I guess our department's kind of unique in that when we do need a day off, it's 24 hours that we have to take at a time. Though when you look at how much we totally have for the bank, that's not very many days per year. Though if someone does have a medical illness pop up, that barely gets you through that three weeks, and that's the minimum recovery time for most surgical procedures.
Motion.
I did not. I know that some of the hospital-based services, they allow a cap on PTO. Let's say that it's 250 hours. Once you hit within your quarter, your 250, they either make you pay it out or take your PTO within that, by that next quarter. That way you don't accrue so much of a high bank, but so that they're also not paying out an extensive amount should the employee choose to leave.
And that does make more sense to me, that you would have to take it. And you are fully staffed right now, correct?
We are fully staffed. I did release the schedule on Saturday, and we only have one full day and a half a day that we're looking for coverage. Compared to the 30 openings we used to have every time the schedule released, I was pretty excited about that.
No, that's fantastic.
And we do have five providers that are able to take PTO next month, based on our current schedule and our part-time roster.
Don and Mike, would you want to look at what other counties are doing?
Are you able?
I can see, I can reach out. I think I had done a spreadsheet, but it's not going to be up to date to current standards. That might take me some time.
Being out.
Sure.
I. Likely. Probably. Eight hours.
And they've been advised.
October. Use them, lose them. Standard. I'm not opposed. Over. I am. Other departments. In the calendar. Bring us back.
I can.
Not opposed to increasing some, but I think you have to be all of our.
Is there a time limit on this? I mean, is there a certain date by which this needs to be decided?
It just needs to be looked at before the end of the year, because the end of the year is when we start to lose it. I did. There is what our current banks are allotted. I know one of the providers is going to use his full PTO next month, so he'll drop off. That's Alex Donovan.
According to our handbook.
I know, but that became a problem last year. We actually had quite a fight in the department. We had two providers that normally took off during December, and what ended up happening, we lost a provider entirely. They were upset that I couldn't grant the PTO.
Times. Or she pulls that one.
Um.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Not in favor of hanging it out. A bit, once again. I'll. Don't use it. Anything else?
I just had a question for you on your 180 days over on the billing.
Mm-hmm.
What do you do, Natasha, when you get to those numbers? I mean, that's an exceptional number.
They are sent to collections.
They are sent to collections. Okay. What is the recovery for those?
It's usually very little. So our billing company actually gives an option for a payment plan. Some people just choose not to do the payment plan, and then after it's 180 days, that's when it starts going towards collections. We do pay a fee to have those collections filed. That is something that I'm going to work with the billing company on trying to resolve, because it is pretty extensive, what's owed to the county.
Right. And just, just so the public knows, it's interesting how much money the ambulance service actually brings in. Newly billed as of August 30th, 2025, is $88,539.01. That's a lot of money. And that's from, for what time period? That was just?
Just from the first to the 30th.
Of August, okay. And then the over 180 days due the county is 144,211. So yeah, it's a, it's a large amount. So I was just curious what, what you did, so.
If you look, billed up to 90 days, that's about Medicare/Medicaid numbers. So sometimes it does take them a little bit of time to reimburse us. So you'll start to see that the numbers from that July 2025 over to the newly billed starts to go down when you go through the columns. And that's just Medicare/Medicaid catching up as well.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm glad your department is fully staffed. I'm sure the county is as well. And things seem to be going in the right direction. That's good.
You have wonderful staff.
Yeah.
You have one question before I sit down. I didn't make the agenda for grants, but based on looking at the grant ordinance that was released, is it only for federal and state grants that are matching, or is it for every grant?
It's for every grant.
Okay. And does this need to be submitted then to the commissioners first? I have some that expire on the 30th of this month. Do I just submit it to you guys, your inboxes? These are some newer ones. Traditionally, our department didn't apply for very many grants. These are non-matching county grants. It's just money that's available. I know Subaru has one, as well as last year, we did get the grant through NIPSCO that provided our EMR education this year.
And if there's any changes, and like if you need to hire additional employees, anything like, anything extra that you don't already have available to you that maybe the county has to provide, really need to know those things ahead of time. That's for you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Randy Larkin?
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay. Happy Monday morning.
Thank you.
So I am before you, as you are aware, that due to some unfortunate circumstances, the town hall that we had scheduled for September 6th was canceled. So I come before you on behalf of a large group of Plasque County residents, community members, and ask that you reschedule the event to honor your original commitment and allow the community voices to be heard.
Randy, at this time, I participate in town hall, climate, country, wells, or county.
So.
People are interested in solar and learning more about solar, well, have a new house.
So I understand that the national climate is tense and that safety absolutely has to be a priority. You will not hear me argue that at all. But security, admin, and can be arranged. We have a trained, skilled facilitator whom I worked with extensively on ground rules. The community had committed to coming to listen with an open mind. Your Doral proposition doesn't give your constituents the opportunity to hear directly from you on your stances on things that are shaping Plasque County for today and years to come. That was the original request. I don't feel national events should silence.
She tries to keep up with what she has going on. We've added additional work with the registrations for the ORB stuff. We have a lot more six years in the county, added past, paperwork as receivable, different things like that that we're having trouble with our time person. So if we would give her an extra 12 hours a week, possibly her full-time position, that would assist us in trying to.
That was my question, is are you seeing a rise in this? Is that the reason for the need to increase the hours?
Absolutely.
So long as you've got the money in your budget and you can move it around to cover this, I have no objection to this.
I don't either.
Can I ask a quick question? So benefits, you'll be able to cover that as well, because then she'll be full-time and eligible for benefit?
That would be correct. We have enough money to move the money around to get that covered as well. And if there is a good reason, we're necessary to get the rest of the money covered. If there's, we believe we have enough money to move it back to the 2025 budget this year. We know that the council is looking at, in October 7th, going back to 2025 budget, 26, we should be able to stand it that way.
Okay, it'll be good for 26.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. The motion, Don? I'll make a motion to approve the addition of 12 hours to the administrative and registry specialist. Is that what it is? With money coming out of the sheriff's department budget.
I'll second it.
Motion in a second to make this a full-time position. Any further discussion? Being known, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. You are next on the agenda to discuss the building inspector merger and council. I say, I'm going to tell you upfront.
Oh.
Okay.
Did you want to do the APC recommendation for battery storage first? Oh, you're leaving that for the.
I'm just saying, I'm not going to pursue this merger. I do believe that he must look at ways to reduce expenses, consolidate.
Okay.
How hard. I am not going to.
Okay. That got louder fast.
Sorry, apparently somebody turned the volume down.
Oh, that's okay. I don't have, this is nice. I mean, I don't even have to eat it.
So.
Yeah, maybe, maybe a little. Okay, so I guess my question on that would be, are we going to, I mean, can I make a motion to deny the resolution for the elimination of the building department at this time? I mean, that resolution was put in front of us. I'll make a, I'll make the recommendation then to deny the resolution for, I don't have the, I gave out all my papers. I want to make sure I say it correctly. Who's got a paper?
Restructuring of Plasque County element. That's good.
That would be it. Thank you.
I'll second it. Motion in a second. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Sheila, Amy?
Morning. Guys, hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioners, I have asked to address you about the merger, about the building department. Not really. Better? There would be no elimination of positions. Okay, hold on, I missed. Nathan would have oversight of all positions department. There would be no elimination of positions. Carla has stated multiple times how overworked and overwhelmed she is within her department. Merging the departments would allow cross-training with, in both departments, would also allow for extra support if the building department was busy and needed extra support. Again, this would be a merger and not an elimination. It has been stated that nothing was provided from the building department for the last five, in the last commissioners' meeting. Why would we continue down the same path? Why would, why would we continue to set up our building department for failure? As commissioners, you're supposed to oversee the daily operations of county government. I truly just don't understand if a solution is being provided, why wouldn't you explore it? Planning for failure seems like a bad idea to me. Why are we not looking for solutions? I wanted to clear any and all questions up about this merger. There's been lots of misinformation floating around. As a council member, it takes our, makes our job harder to be fiscally responsible when departments are not being managed properly. I proposed an HR person a year ago to help with this, and here we are a year later with, with more problems and no solutions. Commissioners, at what point do you stop fighting with each other and start governing again? As leaders of the county, as the, as the executive body and the leaders of this county, you're facing decisions that should be given careful thought before you make them. Currently, you do not have an attorney at your side, nor has our county attorney been available for advising you recently on some of the topics you're being asked to consider, including the merger of these two departments. I'm addressing you as a local leader, a resident who grew up here and chose to return to live here and build a business in the heart of downtown Winna Mac. Over the course of the last year, I've witnessed our county become so divided because of solar projects that we're focusing on nothing else and accomplishing nothing that will grow our county or improve our communities. We are falling behind as a county because we're fighting with each other and not working together for our future. We should want people to succeed. With each resident's success, the county in return succeed. If someone's making money, they're going to end up spending that money hopefully in Plasque County. Isn't this the American dream, to be able to capitalize on business ventures? Today, many of our employees, vendors, and local officials are being harassed by threats and bullying. As commissioners, the leaders of the county, you should be setting the tone and leading by example. The most recent of these attacks started off with language that said, "You have been warned," and included the author praying that people be killed or injured. The email was addressed to county employees and county commissioners. She even suggested who would be made an exemption from the list of people on the email group and would be killed or injured. Such threats, bullying, and attacks are not the climate in which you should be making decisions. Such a climate is not solving any of our challenges, but only inciting people to do something violent. Such a climate is putting pressure on you to make decisions that have not been vetted. We cannot accept this kind of environment for making decisions. Raising decisions off of emotions, it can cloud judgment, making risks, or downsides harder to see. Most of us saw the sad news last week when Charlie Kirk was assassinated by someone in, who thought it was okay to brutally kill another human being because they disagreed with their political values. This is not the climate we as leaders should be creating here in the county. None of us can fathom what Charlie Kirk's wife is now going through, a mother of young children, now widowed. I want better for Plasque County, for my family, for my friends, for my neighbors, and all the people that I serve in this county. You should want more too. It's never okay to encourage violence, killing, or injury. It's never okay to incite others to act this way. It creates a climate of fear. We also should not expect our employees or vendors to work in a climate of fear. Fear is not a sound reason to make a decision. Making others feel fear is not a plan, and it is not a strategy, nor something we should ever accept, ever. This is also another reason I wouldn't advocate for a merger. Carla would not be making decisions in the building department because she's getting bullied and feeling like she has to cave to the pressure of being bullied in fear of losing her job. I think as commissioners, you should be advocating for improving quality of life, increasing personal income, improving amenities. We need to start looking and working through an asset-based lens, not every negative thing we can pick a fight about. If we're not growing, we are declining. Do we want to get to the point where we cannot sustain ourselves? Please don't forget about Senate Bill 1 from the State House. They did not do rural communities any favors. We now have to operate on lower amounts of money from property tax revenue to operate county government. After sitting in countless hours of budget meetings, I can tell you, no one wants to make the hard decisions on how to fix the shortfall of money coming back into the county for next year. We need to remember, we need revenue streams. We don't have an increase of population. Where are we supposed to get the money from? In a climate and culture of attacks and bullying, I question how you can make decisions about our future. It is no surprise that in this environment, we are getting nothing accomplished that will improve our residents' lives. In fact, the climate and culture are even allowing us to plan for our future, as we have people fighting our counties simply to update a comprehensive plan, a plan that all our counties and, a plan that all other counties in the state have made a habit of updating every eight to 10 years. Comprehensive plans require input from stakeholders, business owners, and residents. We have people demanding public input, demanding public input. And we have leaders fighting under, we have leaders fighting undergoing the work of a comp plan, a comp plan also, also required for numerous funding sources in the state, and especially for grants like those of OKRA, the Office of Community and Rural Affairs. We will never qualify for grant dollars if we don't do a comp plan. Every other county in the state has this figured out. Why would we not want to undergo a planning process that involves public input and lays out a vision for our future? Is everyone afraid to talk about what we want for the county? Are we only going to talk about solar? The solar projects are going to produce millions of dollars in revenue, and we have no plan for what to do with that revenue to solve our issues. I don't believe I'm the only person who thinks planning for our future and learning what our residents want to see in their communities is a good thing. Conversations about health, mental wellness, education, the arts, and the quality of life are the conversations we need to have, but none of these are happening. We should be talking about what our residents want us to build so that our kids have things to do and experience, so that we have access to healthcare, educational opportunities, recreation, and more. Instead, we have local leader claiming a threatening letter as a plea for public input when nothing in that letter mentions public input. We have a local leader fighting the comprehensive planning process, which actually requires public input. Is the only input allowed to be the anti-solar input? At some point, we as leaders need to come together and address what we want for our county and not offer what we want to, and not all what we want is to fight for solar or do more solar. We need to come together and talk about how we're going to improve the county. The people who live here, who bought a business here, employ people and work here, the families raising their kids here and participating in our schools and our churches, all of these people deserve for us to do better. Right now, we are not getting any work done and not even planning work. I'm not here to vent about the climate that I think is, I'm not just here to vent about the climate that I think is preventing us from getting work done. I'm not just venting about what I perceive to be a dangerous atmosphere that we as leaders need to address. It's my hope that we can work on solutions. Right now, we're debating how to operate in the county, and we're debating moratoriums. Some of these topics deserve a deeper dive and legal advice on how to do them, should we decide to move forward. Some topics are getting no attention at all. I think it's time to take a step back and rethink how we're conducting business in this environment. I think some of these topics should be addressed through an advisory group or some kind of task force that dives deeper into the issues. Maybe we need more than one of these groups to tackle each of major topics we face. This is typically, typically part of the purpose of a comp plan, work with your residents to determine your future. But if we aren't going to undergo a comp planning process, then at least we should form some task force to work on these issues. None of these advisory groups need to be one-sided committees or groups. For example, if you're going to consider a moratorium on battery storage, why not have a group of people look at this singular issue and make recommendations? You could task a committee or a task force made up of one leader from the commissioners, one from the council, one from the APC, a resident who's pro-property rights, a resident who's anti-solar, and so on, form a group to look at all sides of the issues, let people have input in a professional manner. Require these groups to focus on solutions and consider all sides of an issue or topic. Then when commissioners make decisions based on advisory committee recommendations and based on legal advice and how to accomplish the recommendations, in the current climate, I don't think it's fair to ask you to make any decisions today. I think you should table all of your decisions, including the merger, which you already have, and the future conversation that you're about to have. Take a step back and focus on common goals or solutions that will move our county forward. We cannot accomplish better for this county until we start working together toward common goals. We need to know what those goals are and what our people want. We need to undergo planning and yes, address whatever decisions are pressing. I need input and recommendations from our residents and from experts. Most of all, we need to create a climate and culture that involves all viewpoints, without bullying and threats, and without making decisions under the pressure of those threats and being bullied. Thank you for your consider, considering a different view on these matters. I'm hopeful that we can look at our issues, create working groups to focus on them, and take recommendations, not threats, from residents who are willing to work with us. We have multiple viewpoints, we have multiple viewpoints in this county, and many are afraid to speak out or come forward because of the current climate. Everyone who lives, works, and plays in this county deserves to feel safe. Everyone deserves to be heard, and all issues deserve to be vetted without fear of threats and bullying. I hope you will consider the climate and your role as a leader in this climate. I would ask that you table all the decisions on the merger and the moratorium until you can be advised by our county attorney, and the climate of the county is not so tense. Please consider leading with love and concern and less contempt. Thank you.
Can I ask some questions to you? That was a lot, and that was a lot to unpack. I did take some notes as we were going through. So I guess my first question, Sheila, I heard repetitively over and over and over, we need to know what the people want. We need to hear what the people want. In order to hear what the people want, you have to listen to the people and you have to engage with the people. So I'm assuming, because you want to hear what the people want, you would fully support a town hall?
No, I would not.
Why?
Because a town hall is a political event. It is not a government event, Jenny. Political, tax dollar, tax money should never be funding, funded, funding a political event. They're completely separate things. It's actually illegal.
There, there were donations that were made to do this. Okay, so I'm not going to get into that. My point is, you repeated over and over and over again that the people are in fear, the people need to be heard, we, voices, voices need to be heard. This, that was echoing in my brain, and the whole time I'm thinking, well, how do you get there? How do you build trust? And how do you gain transparency when you don't engage with your community? And I've seen numerous emails, because the emails are sent to all three commissioners. I see numerous emails come through, and I see very few responses to the public. I hope that I respond to about everybody who emails in. But we have a, we have a big, we have a big barrier currently between commissioners, maybe council members, and the community. And the only way to bridge that. Because there's very little trust and transparency currently.
And why do you think that happened?
Why did that happen?
Fact.
Help me out. Why did that, because, because decisions were made behind closed doors that people did not.
What decisions were made behind closed doors?
Many decisions have been made behind closed doors. Decisions to remove 84 ordinances years ago were made. Decisions like the elimination of the building department that gets handed to Mr. Street two weeks ago, that was written by Nathan Orger, that's handed to me, and we want to vote on it that morning. These are not transparent things. Reading a resolution in front of the public two to three times before we vote on something, that's transparency. We don't do that. We get up here, and we propose resolutions that even we haven't read. Now, how does that build transparency and trust? That is what's happening.
Jenny, I'm not up here to debate you. I'm asking you to be a better leader.
Okay. I attended a town hall two weeks ago while others were meeting to make other decisions during the same time. I was there for two hours, and I stood out on the street, taking questions from people. Don't lecture me on transparency and trust. You're not going to win that argument.
I'm not lecturing you on transparency.
Fear, let's talk about fear.
Jenny, I'm not going to sit up here and lecture you on transparency.
Then you can sit down. I want to talk about fear. Let's go to this email.
Commissioner Knievel, we are done with this topic at this point.
So again, folks, I'm, as a commissioner, I'm being told that I cannot address and talk to the public.
You can talk to the public. This is getting out of control.
I took a lot of notes, Don. I can respond to these things. And I'm going to respond to these things. I'm sorry. The people, they deserve to hear a response to these questions. Climate and culture. I think if we go back to this email that was sent, and at some point, this email is going to be released. "I never took that email" is a threat. That email never said people would be killed. That email said that I pray if someone's killed or injured, it's those of you who have been ignoring the request for protections by the community. There was context to that email. The context, we received an email prior to that one from a mom that had two kids that said, "I was almost killed in an accident tonight." That was three nights after two vehicles were totaled. Two vehicles were totaled on the night of our last commissioner meeting. Interestingly, the resident of Plaski County who was involved in that accident still has been provided no insurance information from the developer. This is a family in the county who lost an entire vehicle. It was totaled out. Her husband broke his collarbone, and she's received no contact from a developer or a subcontractor, nothing. I think our community deserves better than that.
Commissioner Knievel, I believe that everyone deserves better than that. No one wants anyone any type of accident. And if they've not been provided the information they need, they could contact the police department, or the police department has that information. Accident.
It is, okay. It's been two weeks. The resident of the county has had no contact with anyone, and she is on her own currently while her husband has a broken collarbone to figure out how they're going to survive the next, until this is resolved. I'm going to let that one go now, but that is heavy on my heart right now for this family in Plaski County. I want to talk briefly about the UDO. So when we talk about the merger of these departments, of the CDC and the building department, I'm not even sure this is legal per our UDO. So we have a comprehensive plan. We have UDOs. They've been disregarded very much over the last five years. And I guess, to be able to put the economic director in charge of our building department goes against our own UDO. And there is someone here that I would like for you, because we've inquired, is this even legal? Jason Kuchme, can you discuss even the legality of the CDC director over the building department?
Point of order, please. Commissioner Knievel, he had just voted that down. There's not a reason to back and hash that.
We're talking, Sheila has still presented a merger. She's presenting a merger.
He was bringing that up from my voice, but I heard how it could help benefit the county. He voted it down.
I also said I would request that you not speak about the merger or a moratorium today until you have legal counsel here to help you. I asked the same thing.
I believe we need to move forward.
There's a lot more I could address on this. If anybody wants to stay around after the meeting, I'd be happy to discuss it with you.
So APC met September 11th in a legally advertised special session, and properly advertised hearing was also advertised in regards to a battery storage moratorium. Their vote was for 12 months to place a moratorium on battery energy storage systems. This 12-month window for the moratorium is to help the APC understand the presence of battery storage in Plaski County, how the process works, ordinance language being properly done, so we can be proactive, so we can have our ordinance in place before battery storage comes into Plaski County, so we don't run into the situations we have where solar ordinances were altered after solar was here. And APC has altered the language, as we've seen the progress, to coordinate and protect and for proper solar construction management. So in speaking with APC's attorney, he had reviewed it. He put some language in here in regards to the termination, because I let him know that APC has been discussing text amendments. We have reached out to some outside sources in regards to the language, to the text amendments, to the ordinance to include battery storage. APC has stressed a concern in regards to, there were a few that have not been able to see a site, so they want to go out to the site. I've submitted them federal and state language to help them understand, and like I said, as well as working with some other entities in regards to proper text amendments to include the ordinance for battery storage. So given that, since the board has already been discussing text amendments, if this process is complete, and they make recommendations for text amendments that are brought to your board, and you choose to accept those amendments, then it will be able for the APC to recommend to terminate the moratorium if it's complete in under 12 months, and then your option is your board to choose to accept that termination.
Well, I attended your APC meeting the other night, and there was great discussion. I've never seen the APC probably work together and ask as many questions and discuss in-depth like they did Thursday night. So I applaud you for what the APC was able to do. So your attorney, Cliff, has looked over all of this, and he has no issues with it. He's good with the moratorium.
Correct. And to be clear, originally, the moratorium was written by Justin Schramm, and then Attorney Schramm, and then Mr. Robinson has, like I said, reviewed it also and submitted it back prior to their September 11th meeting.
So you have had two attorneys look this over?
Correct.
To make sure this is done well. I like the idea of putting the release on it, if, as I know you guys have been working hard, that if you do have this completed before the 12-month moratorium is up, that it can be removed, the moratorium. That's the whole point of a moratorium, give you time so you're not under stress, under pressure to write, you have time to review it. But I like that you can lift that, you know, when you feel like it's in place. I mean, I would support that. I would make a motion to approve your 12-month battery storage moratorium.
Do you have some questions?
Oh. We usually...
Motion, I, for lack of a second, question. What were the...
I don't have that in front of me, but it's within the 10-day to, I forget what, if it's 30 days, it was within that window. And there was a notice advertised for the special session, and then a separate notice advertised for the hearing portion. Your Indiana code states that it can't be advertised longer than 30 days. Nathan's saying he believes it was August 27th edition. The paper sends us their tear-offs when it gets published.
This opposing 12 months shortened?
Correct.
I could...
You can't ask for an extension on a moratorium.
Then we would have to replace another moratorium on it.
This for S...
I believe, Don, you can only request a moratorium one time for 12 months.
By our last commissioner. What was it? By the commissioner. Recommendations, batteries. That...
Yes, that was included in APC's packet, and the APC president also acknowledged in the meeting that they had that. That was actually some language that we had already seen in some other county ordinances also, so it was really consistent with several other counties' language.
How long have you known, or the APC, batteries, and realized that...
So we started discussion in fall of '23 in regards to battery storage.
Before we've known, fall of '23, by habit, language hired.
We did start to, and then we lost our attorney. And as APC and myself have stated, I do not have my law degree. It would be against the law if I were to practice in offering APC text amendments that I don't have any legal counsel to review.
Currently, how far along? How far along are you writing batteries?
So I'm looking at some resources, some government resources, like I said, federal and state, IDAM, Homeland Security, DNR, USDA, and Federal Aviation, and there are several others, NEC, National Electric Code. We have a lot of language that it's almost complete for the board to review, and they've looked at it. They had, we discussed a lot of it in the APC meeting on the 11th, but it was a lot of information, so the board had asked if they could review it more. There were some key points that they wanted to have addressed to the attorney, which I had let him know that I have some information that needs to be discussed before it goes back to APC. I feel it would be probably, not probably, it would be in the board's best interest if we did have additional insight. At the APC meeting, I did offer for the community, I had some copies of some text amendments. We can publish it if Nathan could put it on our county site, so persons of interest could also review these, so there's no lack of transparency there. I feel that we do need to discuss this with other counties, which I have reached out to a couple of different counties in their planning in regards to their ordinance language. And as I had mentioned earlier, many Indiana ordinances in regards to battery storage are very similar in their language in regards to items such as timelines and setbacks, and height, and items of that sort. Also, there is some language in Indiana code that a couple counties don't have an ordinance, but they just reference to Indiana code.
What is the alignment?
Yes, they have a copy of that also.
You've looked... How much, or what has been the discussion, like comparing Indiana? What's the...
Okay, so I already, in those recommendations for discussion, I have already included Indiana code in that, referencing Indiana code portions, and then the NEC 855, which is part of a compliance process also for battery storage. If I were just to guess, I feel if we can get a tour, if we could get, if we can get things aligned with other organizations to help, I feel six months. Because then we, of course, have to advertise the hearing and have the proper publication, and it has to be presented to your board or your approval also. So there's a few limbo weeks that we would probably need.
I think I should...
My department does not have funds for that. However, there are some .org organizations that have submitted information to me, and that has been included in the APC's packet for review as well.
How often do you expect?
Correct. You're absolutely right. So the board is aware that we do need to meet more frequently, and I had told them in the last meeting, we're trying to look for dates that they can all come together on. And I don't feel that it's fair that we just barely meet a quorum, that I would like most of the board to be present for this. However, as I do in the past with the board, when I get information in regards to discussions, I do email it, or persons that can't attend, they get the same information that the board members that are there get, so everybody is aware of the same situation. So they are aware that we are going to meet sooner than alternating months. So we were trying to get one, well, the soonest we probably could have one is three weeks due to advertising deadlines.
I'd like to ask if, 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 ask, if...
Absolutely. I'll forward you the information that we had discussed on Thursday evening.
This pertaining? Currently, action?
So battery storage would be separate from it, and so it would not enter or create solar work.
Well, it's...
They would have to permit separately based on, now, that's if that language is put into the ordinance. So it would be a separate entity, even if it's the same corporation.
Well, contracted ex amount, county council right now, and done with county council asking, they apply for the... Would this moratorium have any type of effect at...
Not for the solar, no.
What about the, have there been any other pass permits?
No.
This...
No. There have been a couple solar companies that have discussed with me that have been passed of my knowledge of the five... passed of my knowledge of the five miles from the transmission line, that it would be assumed that they would be looking into battery storage, but I also haven't heard from those companies this year.
Heard from all four?
That are permitted? Yes. But we don't discuss battery storage, it's just solar since our permits are for solar.
Do we have anything in...
I have, the moratorium. No, it was emailed yet.
Thanks?
No.
What was... I didn't, I did not receive. Are you in here? Well, she's making copies. Are we okay to move on to other business? Okay, approval and sign claims and payroll number nineteen.
I looked at him. Motion. Payroll.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, any discussion? Those in favor of approving claims, payroll number nineteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Next minutes from the September second, two thousand twenty-five regular session.
I've read the minutes from the nine-two-twenty-five regular session and I'll approve those. Make a motion to approve.
Motion is second, any discussion? Motion second to approve minutes from September second, two thousand twenty-five regular session. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Library appointment. We received in the library recommended... From the Plaski County Public Library, the commissioner's appointment to the library board, that Welder had resigned from the position, they are recommending Mr. Jim Peru has expressed interest in serving on the library board for the... For term.
I'll make a motion to put Jim Peru on the library.
I want to have...
I'll second that.
Okay.
I should...
I just want to make sure because I know, Don, you and I had had someone else who had inquired some time ago about this vacancy, I'm not sure how they learned of it, but is anybody here from the library board? Oh, I see people back there. Okay, just a couple of questions. Do you mind coming up just so, because it's live streamed, I just want to make sure everybody can hear? And go ahead and tell us your name if you don't mind. Right up on the top.
Blue light.
Yeah.
Thank you. My name is Richard Minarch, I'm the president of the Plaski County Public Library Board.
Okay, thank you, Richard. Only because we had someone else reach out to us, can you explain, just so we know going forward, what is the process when there is a vacancy on the library board for people to be able to apply so that their name can be in for consideration? How does that work? Do you advertise it or what happens?
No, we don't really specifically advertise it, as I understand it, the library, when a vacancy does occur, the library board evaluates individuals who may be interested in the position, and we do recommend then to commissioners or the school board or whoever is the appointing authority, we do the recommendation to have them make the decision to appoint that.
So, Richard, how would someone know that there is an opening on the library board?
Generally, the library board will ask, members of the library board will ask around, you might say unofficially, for individuals maybe.
Moving forward, is there a way, and I don't know what your board policy is, Mackenzie, I see you back there, so you might be able to answer too, but moving forward, is there a way that you can put it in your board organization that it will be advertised? And the only reason I'm asking is because currently, from what I've researched, you have five members on your board from Monroe Township and one from Van Buren. Is that correct? Is that outdated maybe? Okay. Because when I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, ah, we got a lot of representation from Winemac, but we don't have a lot of representation from the rest of the county. And this other person that inquired was from the west side of the county. So, I would just like for anybody who has an interest to be able to know that there's a vacancy coming up, to be able to put their name in for that vacancy so that they get equal consideration, and then the board can decide, but so that other people can put it in. Does that make sense? Is that asking too much? Okay, so they... Okay, so they just need to come in and let you know that they're interested if a vacancy should become available, correct? Okay. That helps.
We know where Jim, what township, Jim Peru.
I believe he's from Jefferson.
Jefferson.
Jenny, I am also on the library board. Rachel.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, thank you for answering the questions. I appreciate it, yeah.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to appoint Jim. Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed. Discussion ADA consulting firm that presented us. Consulting work for the ADA, a discussed briefly, we had a chance to look at that. Ask Teresa, the total cost of creating ADA transition plan, title six implementation plan, facilitate ADA title six monthly meetings for six spots for consulting. That costs thirty-nine thousand six hundred dollars. Teresa just... Important, they're asking for help, I think it's important.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the ADA consulting firm for help in understanding and reorganizing our ADA.
I'll second it. Motion is second, any further discussion? Saying none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Carla, thank you. Copy.
Don't know, she's back there.
Carla, you mind going over this with us, please?
Do you mind, Carla, reading it for the public? Thank you. And don't read too quickly. There's a lot there.
This is for an ordinance amending the Plaski County zoning ordinance to place a moratorium on battery energy storage systems for a period of twelve months. Whereas the Board of Commissioners for Plaski County, State of Indiana, referencing board, has in place the Plaski County, Indiana Unified Development Ordinance, Ordinance Number twenty-two-two dash oh-five, and adopted on April eighth, two thousand twenty-two, with an effective date as of May twenty-third, two thousand twenty-two, collectively with all amendments, the zoning ordinance. Whereas since the passage of the most recent amendment of the zoning ordinance has received additional public input regarding battery energy storage systems. Whereas the Plaski County Planning Commission is desirous of studying potential amendments to the zoning ordinance, more specifically, certain amendments to the portion of the zoning ordinance as it pertains to BESS and proper regulation methodology and the effects of BESS on Plaski County, its residents, first responders, and first responders' ability to combat hazards with regard to BESS. And whereas the commission believes that a moratorium for a period of twelve months on the issuance of permits to any person, firm, or entity seeking to place or install a BESS on any property within the jurisdiction of the commission in Plaski County, Indiana, will provide the commission and board with the opportunity to consider changes to the BESS portion of the zoning ordinance. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Plaski County, Indiana, the following ordinance amending the Plaski County zoning ordinance to place a moratorium on BESS for twelve months is hereby adopted as follows. The purpose of this ordinance and the moratorium issued hereby shall be to understand the prevalence and presence of BESS within the zoning jurisdiction of Plaski County, its effects on residents and natural resources, and to conduct appropriate studies and to gauge whether battery energy storage for commercial solar energy systems is appropriate within Plaski County, and if so, the extent to which regulations should be developed and enforced. The county, by and through the appropriate regulatory authorities, desires to consider the implications of BESS on the following: property line setbacks, sized tiers or cutoffs, lighting and noise, decommissioning plan alterations, decommissioning fund requirements, site plan requirements, resource impact mitigation requirements, and other safety requirements. Section three reads, "Commencing as of September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five, a moratorium shall be in full force and effect in Plaski County for the issuance of permits to any person, firm, or entity seeking to place or install a BESS on any property within the jurisdiction of the Plaski County Planning Commission in Plaski County, Indiana. A moratorium shall be imposed on the filing and acceptance of any new applications for the permitting of BESS in Plaski County, Indiana, for a period of twelve months. The length of the moratorium set forth above may only be altered upon a majority vote of the commission at a public hearing."
Thank you.
Carla, would you play number...
The length of the moratorium can only be altered by them voting, by APC voting to recommend to terminate the twelve-month length, and then your board approving or denying the termination.
Think so. APC have to recommend?
Yes, and it was discussed Thursday evening that that is something that on, when the text amendments are adjusted and approved, that they would vote in advertised hearing to recommend terminating the moratorium. Section four is effective date, this ordinance will become effective following the proper adherence to Indiana Code three-six-seven-four-six-oh-one. This ordinance shall be construed as an initiated proposal originating under Indiana Code three-six-seven-four-six-oh-two. In preparing and considering this proposal, the commission has paid reasonable regard to the comprehensive plan, the current conditions and the character of the current structures and uses in each district, the most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted, the conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction, and responsible growth and development. Aye.
Carla, Nathan just brought to my attention on the first page, in the first paragraph, an ordinance amending, in the first whereas. Are you with me? Whereas the Board of Commissioners for Plaski County, State of Indiana, the board has in place the Plaski County, Indiana UDO Ordinance twenty-two-two dash oh-five that should read twenty-two-five dash oh-three.
Okay.
I mean, do you agree with that, that that is...
Oh, from those last text amendments we had in... Yeah.
Oh, I'm on the first page. Yeah. No, right up here. The dates need changed. And then, Carla, with an effective date in the same paragraph as of March third, two thousand twenty-five? I mean, I need you to confirm that, Nathan's pointing it out, I don't know about that.
Oh, May twenty-third? Oh, that was from the last text amendments from after Justin creating it.
So, would that need to reflect March third, two thousand twenty-five?
Yeah, I would say yes.
Okay.
Had the privilege of talking, county committee, other county, they opposed a... Earlier, or APC on anything, very frustrating. I'm not in kind of a month more. I would have six months.
Are you comfortable with the six-month moratorium, Carla, if it comes to that? Yes.
Meeting back, I said three, well, she asked for compromise of seven, saying six. That is, we need UDO language, but arguing out of that. Make a twelve, I'm for sure. All tactic. I guess I'm talking about trust, honesty, and if people are legitimately working on it, it could get done at time period. Odd. just, I feel.
And.
And it needs to, I think, something to do.
Okay, fine. When, Don, when you and I had spoke about this a couple of months ago, and you had asked me what a fair assessment of time was, and we seemed to be fairly accepting to a nine-month moratorium, and so obviously that was more than a month ago, so I feel.
We talked, you said nine months.
Yeah.
That's been two.
And that's been, right, so that's why, and we've done work since then, so I feel six months is acceptable. And you want language to read that this has.
Attorney, yes, I want to be solar permits, solar's not going to stop. I truly need help.
Are you making a motion, Don?
I need some help here, Nathan. Be allowed to do six months, six months, go back, be peace.
You're allowed to recommend alterations to what the planning commission has certified, send back to them, because and then they can make revisions and send it back to you and be ping ponged until commissioners are satisfied with the language submitted by the.
So what Nathan did state is correct. So you can accept under the conditions that APC has to alter the adjustments to, or recommend, recommendations to match your request?
Thank you.
So are there, oh, I'm sorry. So are there, are there changes that you need to make that, what Don was just talking about? I mean, are there significant changes you're going to have to do to this to put the language in that? He wanted to tighten it up. I thought it was specific to BESS. Where, where is it not specific to?
I just want clarity. Just more clarity. I'm saying it's not.
So Carla, where would, where would Don be looking at to get more clarity?
Probably section three, we could create a number four, I guess. I would ask the attorney about that for verification, since he was able to add the length language on there.
Number one doesn't, I'm just curious. Number one doesn't do that? I mean, shall be in force, full force and effect in Plaski County for the issuance of permits to any person, firm, or entity seeking to place or install a battery energy storage system on any property within the jurisdiction of the Plaski County Planning Commission in Plaski County, Indiana. How would you tighten that up? It seems pretty tight to me. That's all I'm asking.
I do understand that it does. Number one reads battery storage. I.
Maybe put the word hot, not in solar permits. Well, I'll make a motion to go back to APC to six months more, 12 months.
And do you want to make your motion to include language to exclude solar?
Thank you. Yes, includes specific repetitive language.
I will second that motion.
Motion and a second. Send it back to APC to six months or define language to not include solar permits. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Free zero. Carla, thank you for all your work with us. Thank you, sir. This time, Nathan, do we have VS on the board? VS will be giving a short report.
Yes, I can. Very good. Well, thank you, commissioners. Starting the project update, Moss Creek, we met with an extera, and the project remains on track for pre-construction activities in early 2026, with full construction anticipated in spring 2026. May Apple, the coordination meeting between Mammoth and May Apple was delayed until this week. There has been some pre-construction activities that are immense. Staking has occurred on site, and pile testing will begin this week and continue for the next two weeks as part of those pre-construction activities. Bottle brush, we have a progress meeting with them scheduled for this week. And on to the Mammoth project. Since our last update, there have been two additional fines issued totaling over $70,000 for roadway map violations. Construction hours have been adjusted from 7 a.m. to 7 p.m. They are now 7:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Road repairs continue throughout both sites, and public comments and resident concerns continue to focus largely on roadway safety, such as speeding, stop sign violations, and school bus interactions. As a reminder, we document these concerns, and we forward them to the sheriff's department so they can adjust patrols as they see them. We also received a recent concern from the county surveyor regarding big setback. We have relayed this to the developer, and their survey crews are in the process of verifying measurements. We should have those, that information today. Our role is to document these items thoroughly so that if funds are used to correct these issues, there is a clear evidence and accountability. Those matters are intended to be resolved prior to project completion. Finally, I want to note our attendance today is virtually consistent with our earlier communication regarding staff safety. And the fee amendment between the county and the developer is still under review by the county attorney. We have now surpassed our original agreement amount. We will continue performing this work. Until the updated agreement is in place, the cost now moving forward is solely out of county. The most recent draft of the agreement was only a fraction of the final, of the current scope, but it seemed, the developer seems to be open to expanding that as the that concludes my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tim, the, you said you surpassed the agreement. Where are we in that agreement to extend your services?
The developer has drafted it. It has been sent over to the county attorney, and I have not received any updates from them since.
Okay, I will get with you after this. Our county attorney will be out for some time, and so we will need to forward that to an interim attorney who is taking his place.
Tim, please.
You do, okay.
Tim, please send that to all three of us, plus the auditor.
Uh, Tim, go ahead.
How long ago did you send that to our county attorney?
It was forwarded from the developer. I was only talking about.
You know, how?
And that had been two weeks. I would, if I was to guess, without being into it.
All right, thank you.
Tim, also, you weren't at the last construction meeting at Mammoth South. Jenny Monroe was, and so was Joe. Jenny Monroe, because of the traffic issues, she had mentioned that there was another county, I want to say it was Jasper, but don't quote me on that, who, oh, Jenny, you're there?
Yep.
Okay, you had mentioned, because the $1,000 fines are not having a great impact on correcting driving and speeding and all of that, that there could be an opportunity that Jasper did to, for the developer, and you, help me if I'm saying this incorrectly, but the developer could charge the subcontractor whose driver made the infraction seven times the amount of the original $1,000 fee?
Yeah, and, but to be clear, Jenny, this isn't for like a moving violation or speed. This is one of their on a road they're not supposed to be on, or infraction that we have authority over, that they get fined for. What they did with the developer in Jasper is that developer turned around and fined the subcontractor. This was especially early on when they had solar trucks on the wrong roads, you know, to eliminate that issue from reoccurring for months on end, they started doing that, and then the owners of those subcontracting companies started monitoring on their own because it really ate into their profits to get fined. So that's what we were suggesting that for the fines that we have with vehicles on the wrong places, that they turn around and find the subcontractor and see if that has any impact.
Have you, because we are still having those issues, I'm still getting emails with pictures of dump trucks and all on the wrong roads. Are, have you spoken with the developer about that possibility yet?
Yes.
Are they open to that?
Uh, yeah, I believe so. It, you know, I don't know what the relationship is like with your subcontractors or how they operate, and I'm sure it has to trickle through different layers of management, et cetera, to make decisions on what they're going to do. We just found that that seemed to have a positive impact with Jasper County when they did that.
Okay, I have just one last question. Do you, as VS, have any authority over vehicle registrations, plates, anything like that? I mean, I'm trying to figure out who we, who do we need to contact to make sure that the vehicles that are operating on our roads in Plaski County are compliant with Indiana law?
Yeah, you would, you would have to have your sheriff's department involved in that type of work, particularly if you have to stop a vehicle and check a license or registration. Yeah, we are not uniform police officers trained to do that work, and I don't think the state would even allow us to do that.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Certainly.
Tim, could you repeat what the amount was on those fines you mentioned very early in your report?
Yes, so that number is only for the roadmap violation fines, and we are over $70,000. There have been other fines that were issued regarding signage, which pushes the total over 80. However, for roadmap only, it's $70,000. In which we continue, we just issued one on Friday, and we have more that are in review now.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim and Jenny.
Thank you. It is, thank you. It is time for our drainage board meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, a regular committee.
I made a motion to adjourn.
All right, hold, hold on.
Second, have a motion and a second, adjourn the commissioner's meeting. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye. I wanted public comment.